Could we get the loading area to be striped so that we can ensure that there's nobody parking there?
Absolutely. We're gonna throw a sign that said no parking, but we can stripe it as well.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question. The pavers are all sand set or pervious?
So the sidewalks are gonna be sand set and the drive aisle and parking is gonna be pervious?
Yeah, so we have 16 inches of rock below there. Yep.
May I entertain a motion?
I had one question. That split rail fence, was there any conversations about having that be a privacy fence?
We felt that with the landscaping that was provided with our plan, it would kind of lend to blocking that over time, but we're open to providing whatever fence will satisfy you guys.
What was your proposal for the possible solution to the 10-foot separation?
So I sent Dan over a site plan this morning showing it. Basically, spot 11 is the only one that is encroaching, and it's about five feet. So what we did was we shifted everything up to where we're within the 10-foot, and then we shrunk the carriage house down to make up that difference.
Knowing that the adjacent property owners did come in at that first meeting, Michael, since you're the landscape architect, do you think that we should do something that's more screening with that fence?
At least along the back, not necessarily along the street, but at least along the back. Six-foot privacy fence might be something that, at least to limit people coming, walking through and walking into that property. Look at the structures here. Split rail fence really, that's just inviting somebody to climb it. And I know there's landscape, but the thought of maybe just helping with noise and then light and deterring people from walking into that lot. It is a residential lot.
Are you thinking like a shadow box kind of fence or something a little more...
That would be nice, too.
In addition to all those Liberna? Or in lieu of? I'm just questioning.
I mean, you could scale down that landscape if you're putting a fence up.
And that could be addressed as part of the COFA HD application since that's what landscaping gets reviewed.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Is the motion backed up? I moved to conditionally approve the 6769 Green Street preliminary development plan application subject to the following conditions: Provide a minimum of 10 feet between the parking lot and property lines along secondary frontages; coordinate all utility connections with the town and utility providers to ensure consistency with an ongoing capital improvements project in the area.
It's a project called Historic HD District Improvement, Sewer and Water Improvements that are happening in the area. One of them provides improvements going down Green Street. We have a suggested motion, and I'll open it up for any questions you might have.
Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Good evening. Nathan Sturie, civil engineer for the project. We also have our landscape designer, Rita Doughty, and developer Eric Friedlander here. I want to start by thanking Lydia and Will for meeting with us and kind of talking through some of your concerns and helping us try to push this towards final. I think Dan did a good job with his presentation. The only thing I want to add is we've been ongoing coordination with B4 Jasper and the town on the utility connections. It's kind of landed on who's paying for what at this point, so we're just clarifying that through the process. And I can speak to the sidewalk in the right-of-way. The utilities have to come to the property line, so in order to route folks around the structure, it was kind of the only way to get them around, leave space for the utilities, and provide the stairway up to the second floor. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions you guys have.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I actually have a question for Dan. Do you have a site data table on the parking requirements? If I remember correctly, the parking requirement for the carriage house is one.
It is. I think it's in the staff report.
Okay, and I'm assuming the carriage house will have an enclosed garage?
Yes, sir.
So again, you are utilizing an enclosed parking space in the carriage house for commercial use? For the two buildings?
The thought behind that was the single-family residents of what I'm gonna call Lot 1 to the north will have access to the garage. That'll be their parking. The short-term rental will have spot three or two.
The remainder will be the commercial, and two additional for the residents per 16 acres.
So those could be assigned, such?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. That works for me.
No questions for me?
Could we get the loading area to be striped so that we can ensure that there's nobody parking there?
Absolutely. We're gonna throw a sign that said no parking, but we can stripe it as well.
That's all I have. Thank you.
One other question. The pavers are all sand set or pervious?
So the sidewalks are gonna be sand set, and the drive aisle and parking is gonna be pervious? Yeah, so we have 16 inches of rock below there.
Yep.
May I entertain a motion?
I had one question. That split rail fence, was there any conversations about having that be a privacy fence?
We felt that with the landscaping that was provided with our plan, it would kind of lend to blocking that over time, but we're open to providing whatever fence will satisfy you guys.
What was your proposal for the possible solution to the 10-foot separation?
So I sent Dan over a site plan this morning showing it. Basically, spot 11 is the only one that is encroaching, and it's about five feet. So what we did was we shifted everything up to where we're within the 10-foot, and then we shrunk the carriage house down to make up that difference.
Knowing that the adjacent property owners did come in at that first meeting, Michael, since you're the landscape architect, do you think that we should do something that's more screening with that fence?
At least along the back, not necessarily along the street, but at least along the back. Six-foot privacy fence might be something that, at least to limit people coming, walking through and walking into that property. Look at the structures here. Split rail fence really, that's just inviting somebody to climb it. And I know there's landscape, but the thought of maybe just helping with noise and then light and deterring people from walking into that lot. It is a residential lot.
Are you thinking like a shadow box kind of fence or something a little more...
That would be nice, too.
In addition to all those Liberna? Or in lieu of? I'm just questioning.
I mean, you could scale down that landscape if you're putting a fence up.
And that could be addressed as part of the COFA HD application since that's what landscaping gets reviewed.
Any other questions?
You guys?
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Is the motion backed up?
Yes.
I moved to conditionally approve the 6769 Green Street preliminary development plan application subject to the following conditions: Provide a minimum of 10 feet between the parking lot and property lines along secondary frontages, Green Street and Hickory Trace; coordinate all utility connections with the town and utility providers to ensure consistency with ongoing capital improvement projects; and stripe the proposed backout parking space.
That was good.
Do we want to do that? And replace the split... And replace the split rail fence along the rear property line with a privacy fence.
So there's no new business during the discussion, so no action, just a workshop. Angie?
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is a workshop to discuss accessory structures, specifically carports in the Old Town Bluffton Historic District. This item has come to you before when an Old Town Bluffton Historic District resident initiated a text amendment to the UDO to allow an existing standalone metal canopy carport that was erected without an approved certificate of appropriateness or an approved building permit. At the time, he did ask that we include regulations and guidelines, so this is a staff-led UDO text amendment. Since the adoption of the UDO in two thousand and eleven, carports that are over one hundred and twenty-one square feet are classified as carriage houses and they must comply with the requirements of this specific building type, including not exceeding the maximum size of a thousand two hundred square feet and footprint of eight hundred square feet, as well as design requirements which include being smaller than the main structure. As previously stated, carports now called carriage houses are typically smaller prefabricated structures and most pre-two thousand and eleven are non-conforming under the current UDO, which does not allow in-kind replacement if they are damaged or deteriorated. The UDO now defines carports as carriage house building type focusing on design and only allowing one per lot in most zoning districts, including Neighborhood General. If the property already has an approved carriage house and allowing an additional one like a carport would require a UDO amendment impacting all of Old Town. So this has had several workshops through town council, planning commission, and Historic Preservation Commission. And just some points that were brought up are that regulations should be practical and not burdensome to long-term residents, such as having flexible standards for varying lot sizes and configurations. Carports should be classified separately from sheds or carriage houses and they should address the scale, size, and height supporting historic district character and avoiding overwhelming structures. And this, these are just sort of some ideas of what a UDO text amendment would look like. Some items that should, you should consider addressing are screening with louvers, landscaping, whether or not they should fit two vehicles or a boat, a golf cart, what kind of orientation you'd like on the lot, and what limitations, if any, should be made to utilities such as lighting and plumbing. And also encouraging visual diversity and avoiding uniformity, as well as residential use only and no commercial activity. When this proposed UDO text amendment went to town council in August, town council requested additional opportunities for the planning commission and Historic Preservation Commission to review and provide more feedback on the potential amendments prior to any further action, which is why we are here presenting to you again in another workshop. And that's what the Department of Growth Management is looking for input and direction. This is, these are two items that we really want your input on. One being maximum lot coverage. Should carports be subject to a maximum lot coverage requirement based on zoning district and building types? And lot coverage would include all impervious structures or surfaces ensuring sufficient open space, stormwater management, and the preservation of neighborhood character. We are also thinking about a new building type to be described as a carport and some examples of elements to that is allowing only carports on residential lots where an existing principal structure already exists. Restricting carports to a maximum footprint of six hundred square feet, subject to district-specific lot coverage limits. Establishing a height limit not to exceed either the principal structure or eighteen feet, whichever is less. Not permitting any solid walls, a maximum of two sides to be enclosed with louvers or horizontal panels, limited electric service, no internal plumbing. Placement of the carport and possibly keeping it at least twenty feet behind the front plane of the principal structure and potentially limiting how many carports can go in a lot. This is an example of what incorporating adding maximum lot coverage could look like in the Unified Development Ordinance. And this is just the Neighborhood General Historic District building type requirements. I will come back to the slide. It is a summary of everything that I have discussed so far as something for you to look over. So the next steps after tonight's meeting is we're going to take the feedback and incorporate it into a draft amendment and we will be coming back to you for public hearing and for you to make a recommendation to town council in the next planning commission meeting, which is October twenty-second. And the tentative, right now, we're looking at town council first reading in December, followed by final reading and public hearing January thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-six. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Do you have any questions?
I like it.
I have comments, but not questions.
Okay, we can do that, too.
I do think we should consider creating a minimum roof slope. I think if we end up with only a maximum height of eighteen feet, it is very likely that we will get applications for a flat roof eighteen-foot-tall structure. And to me, that's not very congruent with the rest of Old Town and the UDO requirements for principal structures. And I think that becomes much more obtrusive and doesn't kind of meet the requirement of being secondary to the principal structure if we allow a flat roof. My suggestion would be a four and twelve because that is kind of what starts to get it to appear as though you have a sloped roof on it and not looking architecturally very flat. And I do think it definitely needs to count towards the lot coverage. Most of these lots have between like sixty-five and eighty percent, and I think we don't need to increase that any more than we already have. I have some concerns that six hundred square feet is very large. I think, I mean, you can park two cars very easily in four hundred square feet. I think a lot of a six hundred square foot, eighteen-foot-tall structure compared to what is built in Old Town is going to feel very, very large compared to the scale of the rest of the residential structures. I understand wanting to give flexibility, but I would just question if the flexibility is maybe starting at a little bit less of a number, whether that's four or five hundred square feet. I just think it's a pretty large, large structure, especially if somebody has a house and a carriage house and a carport. I think we start to get a little bit out of scale with that. I would suggest that the materiality of the carport needs to comply with the rest of the UDO and not allow deviations from that, which would allow those metal carports. I don't know why if we're not going to allow carriage houses or main houses to use some of those materials, why we would want to encourage that for a new building type. And I think I saw in some of the town council comments, maybe talking about hurricane resistance. I do think under the building code, anything less than two hundred square feet technically does not require a building permit. So I do think the text amendment should require that no matter what, if you're building a carport, it does have to have lateral wind resistance, so these things aren't blowing around.
Yeah, with the ridges. That's what we require.
And I would question if we want that to be, have the same guidance as carriage houses in terms of where it can sit on the lot. Like, I think carriage houses have to be totally behind the house, don't they? Or are they allowed to be twenty feet back?
I believe it's the twenty feet behind the principal structure.
As long as it's the same for both of those, I think that's okay.
So Lydia's comments made me think, so this, is this a situation where it's a maximum of six hundred square feet, it's a maximum of eighteen feet, but that doesn't guarantee? It, it still has to go through a review of HPC and it can, HPC can still say, no, six hundred square feet, eighteen feet tall would not be allowed because it's not secondary to the principal structure or, is that still the case? Okay. So there's no guarantee, those aren't guaranteed footprints, they're still subject to approval under the Kofa?
Yep.
Yes.
That will be somewhat subjective.
But it won't be true for things outside of the Historic District that are governed by the UDO. Is that correct?
That's correct. I believe we're, this is exclusive to the Historic District.
I just think we're going to get in, and weaken whatever you guys want to do, but I do think if you allow six hundred square feet and eighteen feet in the language, it is going to be very difficult to make those arguments from the HPC side. I think some of them will be obvious, but there's going to be some, well, but this is the text of the code and there is some discretion, but I do think you're going, there will be, like, I can't really imagine a scenario unless you have like a multi, at least like an acre lot where that's an appropriate size structure. That's just my two cents.
I, I agree with a lot of what Commissioner said. I, I guess, I hope we're not designing something for a one-off. We see one picture of a very large Class A motorhome and what carport conveys to me is a car or an SUV or a small boat. If, if we're trying to accommodate Class A SUVs or forty-foot boats, I feel that is really going to change the character with eighteen-foot-high and six hundred square-foot carports. So again, I, I, I don't know if we're trying to solve a problem for a one-off, which has started this whole thing, or if we're trying to design something that would fit with the character of Old Town going forward.
And I just want to reiterate, these numbers and these, everything sort of bulleted is just staff kind of going off of what we have heard so far. So we would love more and more precise, you know, if you think four hundred is a good number to go with, please let us know.
Do you have a recommendation?
My recommendation would probably be four hundred or less because I think even if somebody wants an RV, you can still do that. You can fit two cars in that. You could fit a car and a golf cart or an oversized boat. Plus, you have to think, it's not like this is for them to have two vehicles on their lot. You can have an eight hundred square foot footprint carriage house, which is more than enough to park two vehicles, two and a half vehicles. The porches on your carriage house don't count towards that eight hundred square foot footprint, so you can have a carport that is attached to your carriage house that is part of the carriage house definition. And then you can also have this extra structure. So just the larger this is, you could end up, and I'm, if we want to allow people to park six under-roof vehicles per lot or whatever, that, we can, but that is what we are leaving it open to, in my opinion, if you go that way, because you can already get parking under roof with the existing UDO for three, three and a half vehicles.
Like a shed roof off of your carriage house as a carport?
The only problem is some of those smaller boats are lo, longer than twenty feet if you include the, the trailer. So you've got an engine and trailer, thirty feet is really the.
But it does need to be twenty feet wide.
No, no, certainly not. But I mean, if you, if you're concerned about the height, then just lower the height of the structure. Don't, don't let it be eighteen, so we're not allowing a thirty-foot or twenty-eight-foot Winnebago to be stored. You know, let, let's lower the height of the, the structure then. Because most people who have a boat, they have a center console, I mean, and this is a fishing town, you know, this is a water town. They can't get in their garage because the garage is just too short. I mean, unless you get a twenty thousand dollar garage door to fit for your, for your boat. So I mean, the idea is just trying to, I don't want to say limit, but just really limit that height, so we're not going to have these less than thirty-foot Winnebagos stored, a, a storage facility for Winnebago, basically.
Well, and I think even in four hundred square feet, you could easily get a thirty-foot-long structure in that footprint. I just struggled to think of a scenario where like, why do we need an extra six hundred square feet of storage that has never been allowed? And a lot of these lots are fifty feet wide.
Big area.
Totally covered in structures as it is.
Thirty by twenty is a big area to store.
So do we have any more specific recommendations we can give to staff?
And those are the two, it's the height and the square footage.
But the height, what, what would we say the height should be? Eighteen feet sounds like a lot to me. And looking at that picture, it looks like a lot.
It is. Eighteen feet is high, but I think even, to me, what's more important than the overall height, because that at least is somewhat regulated by the existing structures on the lot, is going to be giving it a roof pitch, because I do think a steeper pitch that starts lower and gets up to what you need it to be in the middle will feel much better in keeping with the neighborhood scale than to do something with a low pitch or no pitch that's at whatever the maximum height is. Most, what, how tall is a center console boat, you know? I mean, I don't know what we should set the arm to.
On a trailer? I don't know. Fourteen feet?
Yeah, mine's probably fourteen.
Yeah.
And I think eighteen's probably a decent height as long as we keep it in the, because you want a roof to be able to come up beyond that. So I'm not so much against the eighteen feet, so long as the eighteen feet includes a minimum roof slope. I just think six hundred square feet is a tremendous size for something that was pre, when the UDO was created, it was not anticipated that this would exist at all.
I think when, when we're saying limited power, we're talking about providing lighting, maybe, maybe a couple outlets, nothing more than that. You know, folks would want to plug any fans or.
Charging things.
Right. Charging things. So, so that's the extent of what we mean by limited power.
So what, so I think what we heard was a recommendation of four hundred square feet instead of six hundred? And no, no flat roofs, maybe provide a roof pitch of four twelve as, as what the, the minimum roof pitch? And then I don't know if I heard, if we heard any other suggestions.
Material type?
Yeah.
I think the other, at least for me, was just having the materials comply with the rest of the UDO and the same with it counting towards the lot coverage. And when we're talking about eighteen feet, does that mean to the ridge height, like to the tallest point of the building?
So I did want to put this slide in front of you again. I don't believe that the last one I had up looked at maximum lot coverage, but that is another way that we can view the UDO text amendment. Rather than having it be one per lot, it can just be meeting a maximum lot coverage. And the reason I want to bring this back up as well is because it was mentioned in the August town council meeting, whether you want to look at lot coverages and potentially allowing more than one carport if a lot is. if a lot is large enough for it.
Any questions to that?
My concern with allowing multiple, and again, if the lot is big enough, and hopefully it's all, the HPC will review it. I just have some concerns with how closely things are going to start getting together and how much under-roof area we're putting on some of these lots. Don't the larger lots already allow multiple carriage houses?
Riverfront.
But do we have any other large lots besides the riverfront?
That is a good question. I want to say there are not many. Because I feel like that are outside of riverfront.
That was considered, when the UDO was made to begin with, that the larger lots already can have two carriage houses. So now they can have two carriage houses and a carport. Like, do we need more carports than that?
So is there a census on limiting it to one carport? Or you guys still kind of up in the air on it? I don't know how many lots that are out there that could have a principal structure, carriage house, and two carports and still be under the maximum cover. But I don't know for sure if there can be too many.
I would vote to limit it to one.
I think I'd agree with that.
I would.
I don't know, I'm having a hard time limiting the carports. It's all covered under the maximum coverage. So what if you said, well, I don't want two carriage houses at a carport? I just want two carports.
But you can have a carport that counts as a carriage house. Like, a carriage house is not a definition of an actual structure. It's a definition of a footprint of a building. It doesn't mean it has to be enclosed. Like, you're currently allowed to build a carport. It just counts as a carriage house because of the square footage. So the lots, if somebody says, "I want no enclosed garage space," they can already build a carport right now. It just counts as a carriage house building type. So they can already have one. If they want another one, now they can have two. So it's really just, what do you want to do with what you're allowed to put under roof? But carriage house is not a, because it's a form-based code, that's just the definition of the square footage of the building and the building height and that kind of stuff. But it is not that it must be enclosed with garage doors or have heated square feet or anything like that. It's just an 800-square-foot maximum enclosed footprint.
So we will take your feedback. And just a reminder, we'll be back October 22nd with public hearing and recommendation. So if you do think of anything between now and then, you'll be able to add it to our recommendation.
More other business? Second?
Second.
All those on favor?
Aye.
Aye.